The March tenth, two thousand and twenty, regular meeting of the Mentor Board of Exempted Village Board of Education is called to order. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section three-three-one-three-point-one-five of the Ohio Revised Code. Mr. Wilson, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Briner?
Here.
Mr. Buckley?
Here.
Ms. Jisling?
Present.
Mrs. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Tuttle?
Here.
Could you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would like to welcome everyone to the March tenth, two thousand and twenty, regular meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education. Prior to this evening, each board member has received for their review and consideration the agenda and materials associated with each agenda item for the board's approval via the district's paperless Board of Education Agenda System, Board Docs. The public can access the agenda through the school district's website. The agenda is available through the district's website for public viewing the Sunday prior to the board meeting. Board members have the opportunity to call the superintendent and chief financial officer for information concerning agenda items and to request, if needed, additional information. There are two places on the agenda where the board entertains comments from the community. The first hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on agenda items only. The second hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on any subject, whether it is an item on the agenda or another issue. When addressing the board, please state your name. Comments are limited to three minutes, and please address questions to the president. This meeting is being televised on a delayed basis and will be shown on Spectrum Cable, Channel ten-twenty-six in Mentor and Channel ten-twenty-five in Mentor-on-the-Lake. This meeting is also being videotaped and will be shown on our YouTube channel, Cardinal TV Mentor Ohio. Please place your mobile telephones on silent mode during the meeting. Moving to the agenda approval of minutes of the February eleventh, two thousand and twenty, regular board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes. Next on the agenda is hearing of the public for agenda items. Seeing none, let's move to the superintendent's report and recommendations. Mr. Porter.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President and members of the board. I have the following recommendations listed under the consent agenda and recommend approval of items five-A-one through five-A-six. I also should mention, five-A-six, a project bid is not coming out of the Permanent Improvement Fund, but these needed enhancements to the board office were planned out of the IT budget and the ESC state funding.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. President and members of the board, tonight we are recognizing several outstanding students and staff for their achievements. I'd like to invite Mr. Hammond and Mrs. Jisling to the podium to begin our presentations.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Porter and Mr. Wilson. This evening, it gives me great pleasure to recognize our grade-level Spelling Bee Champions based on a district competition that culminated on February third, two thousand and twenty. These students excelled at the building level by winning their respective spell downs before moving on to our district competition. I'm going to read the students' names in alphabetical order. I'll also give what award they won. Students, when I announce your names, if you would, come this way, shake our hands, and then I would like you to continue on with the board members here to shake each of their hands as well. Jacob Armstrong, fifth-grade champion. Ayesha Faruki, sixth-grade alternate. Tyler Granito, fourth-grade champion. Noah Hollander, sixth-grade champion and district runner-up. And our last award winner, Anna Prabelski, seventh-grade champion, district champion, and county Spelling Bee runner-up. Congratulations. Let's give all these students a nice round of applause. Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Porter and Mr. Wilson, each year, our district is honored by the opportunity to participate in the George E. Hayward VFW Post nine-two-nine-five Awards. Specifically, these are Teacher of the Year, Voice of Democracy for students in grades nine through twelve, and Patriots Pen for students in grade six through eight. At this time, it is my privilege to welcome to the podium Mr. Dave Napolkney, Commander of VFW Post nine-two-nine-five, and Mr. Bob Zonaville, Chaplain, Service Officer, Awards Program Promoter for VFW nine-two-nine-five. They will join us in representing these awards. For presenting these awards, Mr. Napolkney and Mr. Zonaville are outstanding supporters of our Mentor Schools, and we are incredibly grateful for their dedication, not only to our community, but to our country. Gentlemen?
For many years, the VFW has had what we awards for Policeman of the Year, Fireman of the Year, Teacher of the Year, and then we have what we call Voice of Democracy, which is senior high school. Every year is the subject that we give them. And we have Patriots Pen for the middle school. This year, we had over four hundred essays. I read every one of the four hundred, most of them two or three times. I probably could be criticized for not picking one that I picked somebody, overlooked somebody. But what's most embarrassing was if I were to write an essays on the same subject that these students did, I wouldn't have done as well. As a tribute to the staff, the teachers, and the students, sometimes we have a tendency to not show enough respect for our young people, and I think they're great. And I think the Mentor School system is truly outstanding. I don't think, I think sometimes we seem to look around to find fault when there's so much good to see. The essays, we took some of them down to the post, let our members read them, and even they couldn't believe how good they were. It's really quite a thing, so. Go ahead. Go ahead, Jim. You want to say something, Dave?
Well, Mr. President and board, thank you for allowing the VFW to present these awards to the Mentor School system. You have an excellent system. You can tell by all the letters and all the stuff that we have. It's really appreciative. A lot of the people at the club have read these essays, and they thought they were outstanding. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Bob, and we're going to start with...
Go ahead, Bob. I got it. I'll do it. Okay. Our first award this evening is for Teacher of the Year. Nominations could be submitted by a fellow teacher, a supervisor, or a non-related individual. Teachers were nominated based on innovative teaching, dedication to education, they teach citizenship education topics regularly, and they promote America's history and traditions effectively. Teachers who promote civic responsibility, flag etiquette, and patriotism are prime candidates for this award. At this time, it is my great privilege to announce that this year's high school Teacher of the Year Award goes to Mrs. Marie Waltz, Social Studies Teacher at Mentor High School. Okay, we're going to start out next with our Patriots Pen. Students, when you come up, if you would, we're going to go right down the line here. We have something for you from the board. We also have something for you in the form of a check, and as a really nice certificate as well from the VFW, so you'll just come right through and keep on going right down the line here. Patriots Pen, this award is open to all students in grades six, seven, and eight. The competition gives students an opportunity to write an essay expressing their view on an annual patriotic theme. The theme this year is What Makes America Great. Essays are judged on student knowledge of the theme, theme development, and clarity of ideas. A positive approach is recommended to express a student's viewpoint. This year, we have six award winners at the middle school level, and they are in order of scholarship awarded. Lauren Bangarter. Our next award winner is Quinn Marino. Our next award winner is Tyler Rhodes. And our top award winner is Avalina Climo, and she is actually going to read for us tonight. I'm going to shake the hands over here. Go ahead. We want to make sure she gets everybody's opportunity here. Go ahead. Come on over here. We want you to make, we want to make sure we can hear you here, right?
Hi, my name is Avalina Climo, and What Makes America Great. There are many things that make up America's greatness. America is one of the only countries that provide opportunities, freedom, and safety. In this essay, you will know all about how America is great. My grandparents both came from, to America from Italy in the nineteen fifty's for the opportunities it provided. They came from a poor country with little jobs, living in a one-room house with no heat, electricity, or running water. The economy was struggling post-war. After coming to America, my grandparents took advantage of the great opportunities, building houses and selling them. America also has a well-developed education system. In other countries, kids don't have the opportunity to finish school because their families don't have enough money. In America, schools are paid through taxes. It gives kids the opportunity to get a good job and live their best life. Opportunity is a big part of the American lifestyle. Freedom is the most important reason why America is great. People have the right to believe in what they want to believe and do what they want to do. Many other countries like North Korea don't allow you to choose what you want to do in life. Some don't allow you to believe in what you want to believe, in whether it's Christianity, Buddhism, or Islam. Others pick who you're going to marry instead of allow you to decide. In America, you can vote for who you think would make a good representative. If you break laws in America, you are innocent until proven guilty. In Great Britain, students take tests on what they are best at. That's what determines what their job will be. America allows you to choose what you want to do in life. Therefore, freedom is the most important reason why America is great. America is a safe environment for families to live. There is a large amount of people who join the Army, Navy, and the Marines to protect America. America is surrounded by police there to protect us, too. For example, Africa is not recommended to be a safe place for families to live in because of the amount of kidnappings and murders unlike America. Many families in America don't have enough food to fill themselves. America is lucky to have food available to eat. In Nigeria, terrorism is a big problem. Americans don't need to be as scared as Nigerians would be about terrorists. America is a very safe environment for families to live. In conclusion, America is very lucky in comparison to many other countries. America has opportunities for families, freedom that allows you to choose your life, and a safe environment for families to live. America is a wonderful place to live, and I'm proud to be an American.
Thank you, Avalina. Next up, we have Voice of Democracy. This award is open to all students in grades nine through twelve. Each year, nearly forty thousand dollars in high, or forty thousand high school students, excuse me, compete for more than two million dollars in scholarships and incentives. Students compete by writing and recording an audio essay on an annual patriotic theme, and again, this year's theme was What Makes America Great. This year, we have four award winners, and I'm going to read those two in the order of the scholarships that they are awarded. The final two students' names that I read, I want you to come through and get your awards and shake the board members' hands. They're going to read essays for us as well. Our first student is Ashley Kaplik. Yeah, well done. Our runner-up was Janke Patel. I'll let you make the tour, then come on back, okay? And our first-place winner, Hannah Whalen.
Hi, my name's Janke Patel, and I'm a freshman at Mentor High School. What Makes America Great? Harry Truman once said, "America was not built on fear. America was built on courage, on imagination and an unbeatable determination to do the job at hand." We have many ups and downs. Even through all of it, we are one big happy family. The government, soldiers, volunteers, et cetera, all have played an unforgettable role. All of our freedom and rights come from us fighting for what we have deserved. A couple reasons of the thousands that make America great include equality, freedom, and the matter of peace we all have. Equality is something that every part of the world receives. We are extremely blessed to all live together and to be treated equally. Years ago, people were segregated based on their race, religion, color, ethnicity, et cetera. Currently, we do not have to worry about this at all. The United States is a land of opportunity. Anyone can come here and be welcomed, create a living family, and be respected as well. I just think it is phenomenal how far we have come and grown. Even though we have to fight for all these privileges, we still receive them. We do not just have one ruler like the eighteen hundreds, we have a democracy. We have a voice in decisions that occur and events that have happened to this, to what we call home. Secondly, freedom. This includes the freedom of speech, religion, expression, equal protection, and the right to vote. We are allowed to express ourselves through the act of words. Understudy press and schools can have reports edited by the school and gear-relocated by the organization in light of the fact that it's the First Amendment. Supporting the opportunity of the press doesn't make a difference. Understudy reports have also fall under the supervision of the Instruction Frameworks Managerial Branch, who have complete control over the understudy paper. Our ability to speak freely and protection are off by a long shot to what they guarantee for reasons, for example, national security. The administration can control, hold, and deny, or even control chosen snippets of data. Lastly, we have an enormous amount of peace. We are able to sleep peacefully and stay in our houses without worrying, all because of the veterans that have fought for us on the borders. We owe the entire world to them. I'm extremely thankful for their sacrifices and actions they have taken for us. There are various implications for opportunities that have been built up all through the veritable time of the United States. During this cutting-edge time, the U.S. had certain timeframes that satisfied the beliefs of opportunity. For example, the Gilded Age. Peace can be something we all take for granted, but we should not. In final analysis, there are many reasons why America is great. Unfortunately, some people take them for granted and means nothing to them. We all should be grateful for what we have been gifted with, including equality, freedom, and peace. All these come back to the heroic people who have helped us achieve such accomplishments. I will never be able to thank them enough, and I'm very proud to live in America. Thank you.
Before this next young lady reads hers, she's also a district award winner. Should be honored at a dinner this Saturday evening out in Astoria, and get, receive more awards. On behalf of the VFW, I do want to make two comments. We spent over twenty-five-hundred dollars for these awards. Number two, for those of you that receive checks, do us a favor and cash them. Sometimes we have to chase them down and cash them.
The phrase "What Makes America Great" is different for everyone. For most people, it is only about the freedom we have. Yes, freedom does play a huge role in what makes America great, but what about the other aspects? Unlike many other countries, in America, we get to choose, we get to choose who runs the place we call home. Americans do not understand what it's like to live, the like, to live in a dictatorship, where one single person rules your entire life. They tell you what to wear, what career to have, where and when you can shop, or something as little as what you can watch on TV. America is land of the free. We are allowed to go out with friends on Friday nights and still have the comforting feeling that you will be able to sleep in your own bed with the roof over your head. You get to go home to see loving parents with good-paying jobs who don't have, who don't have to, who don't have concern about where your next meal will be from or how they will pay the next bill. When America gained its independence, it also gave a people a sense of hope that they could start fresh, get a new life, and obtain a job that allows them to support their family. America is great because of our drive to be the best we can be. We are the most technically advanced country in the world. Altogether, we are great because of our diversity from others. You are able to be whatever race, sexuality, religion, or gender that you choose to be. Being American means that you can voice your opinion on anything you want and not have the concern that you will get in trouble for speaking your mind. There are many opportunities offered in this great country for both men and women. I can wake up one morning and decide that I want to be a doctor or a lawyer. I am not forced into a profession that I don't want. I have a free education that will allow me to succeed in the future. The Constitution is another factor that ensures America's greatness. Whether you are born an American citizen or legally came over here to start a new life, your rights are insured by one piece of paper. For example, the right to bear arms or the right to vote at the age of eighteen. All those rights are given to you as an American citizen. Our military strength makes America great. They give us a sense of protection so the citizens of the country are able to live the life they deserve. America is economically stable. The country is able to pay all of its workers for the hard work they have done. We are able to develop new inventions or simply fix an unpaid road. We are fortunate as Americans to have medicine and doctors right at our fingertips. We have discovered how to cure diseases and make people feel better when they are sicker and pain. Our culture is extraordinary. From the music we listen to to the clothes we wear, it is another form of expression for people, which is allowed in this region. As a country, we take the citizens' ideas and feelings into consideration with everything our government does for us. Being an, being an American means that you get to live the life of choice, responsibility, and independence. We are all our own person in this wonderful world, and if someone has a dream or wish they want to pursue, they can come to America. As an American citizen, I can say that living the American dream is most certainly true. I have been living it my whole life. Growing older, I realize how fortunate I am to be an American because of all the amazing things this country has to offer. So yes, what makes America great is different for everyone. We all have our own feelings and opinions on everything. We are more than just a country that offers freedom. We are a strong United Nation. That is what makes America great.
Just one other word before we leave. Commander, Mr. Zonaville, I don't know what we'd do without you two. Your fantastic support for the district and for our district students. Thank you both very much.
Yes, I'd just like to say, too, your parents should be very proud of these students, and I'm exceptionally proud of Mentor High School. I'm a graduate of Mentor High, sixty-seven, and I've done well in my life, and I appreciate everything that Mentor has done for me. So God bless you all. Thank you, Mentor School Board, for allowing us to be here. Thank you.
Congratulations to all the winners, and we're going to take a five-minute break for those students who would like to go home and start their homework. Okay, we're back in session. Mr. Porter?
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the board, at this time, I would like to invite Mr. Crowe to the podium for the high school graduation update.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Porter and Mr. Wilson, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening to provide an update on requirements for high school graduation and our proposal for our locally-defined SEALS. Before we go into the newest requirements, I wanted to take a few minutes to review the multiple requirements for our different cohorts from two thousand and five through two thousand and twenty-three and beyond. So we have three main cohorts here. That's two thousand and five to two thousand and seventeen graduating class, two thousand and eighteen through two thousand and twenty-two, and then two thousand and twenty-three, which is our current freshman students, and then beyond. The one common requirement for all these different classes is twenty-one high school credits. After that, it changes up a little bit. So different requirements. So the class of two thousand and five to two thousand and seventeen had their own requirements. Two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty-two had a, had an initial set of requirements, and then, as you can see underneath, they had extended options with the two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen classes having the same extended options. Two thousand and twenty had a different set of options, and then two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two, they couldn't meet the initial... the initial graduation requirements, they also have a different set of options. And then the class of 2023 then obviously has their own options. So our first group, the 2005 to 2017, we had the OGTs. I'm sure many of you remember that, the Ohio Graduation Test. Five different tests students would take their, their sophomore year, obviously reading, writing, mathematics, science, and social studies. Our students fared very well with those. When we moved to 2018 to 2022, there was three main pathways that students had to, had to do to, to graduate. They are end-of-course exams, which we call the AIR test, or we chose to use the AIR test of the state of Ohio, which students needed to earn 18 points on. A combination of these seven tests. Other options were industry-recognized credentials and a work keys component. With industry, industry-recognized credentials, they had to earn 12 points in a career field, could be on a single industry-recognized credential or a combination of credentials. And then there was also the college and career readiness test, which is really just the ACT and SAT. And those were the three initial pathways. After, there were some numbers, and the number of students that may not be able to qualify for those different pathways, the state then gave extended options to these students. This is our first group, extended options. Students had to meet two of these options. This is for the class of 2018 and 2019. During their 12th grade year, there was an attendance component, a GPA component, a capstone component, and a community service or work component. And those four had to be done just during this, just during the senior year. And at the time, schools could just define what this, what the capstone experience was, what the work experience was, and what the community service experience was. You're going to see it here in a couple slides. When we get to 2020, the state actually started defining that, you know, what that was supposed to be, just to make sure that everyone had the same standards. And then during high school, there was additional things that students could have done, one being CCP credit, earning CCP credit, another being taking an AP course and earning a score of three. Again, taking the work keys assessment score, three in each of the test sections, earning an industry-recognized credential, just needing three points this time to meet that one, and also earning the Ohio Means Job Readiness Seal. And we had several students that earned, we had students earning one of these. You know, at every single graduating class, we at least had one student who earned each of these. 2018, 2019, realizing that there's another group of students that they thought they should look at, there was extended options for CTE students specifically. And for these extended options, the student had to complete their CTE program, so they couldn't just be in it for half the time. They had to complete four courses, which all of our programs have the four courses. And if they did that, they had to earn a proficient score in their web exams. That's the test that our career tech students take at the end of each course. Or they could have earned 12 points in an industry-recognized credential, or they could have completed a workplace experience of 250 hours with evidence of positive evaluations. And again, we had career tech students that, that were able to graduate through this pathway. Moving on to 2020. So the 2020, also with the same initial three pathways, the AIR test, industry-recognized credential, work keys, and then the third one being the, the college readiness test, there was additional extended options to these students. When I say additional, the state better defined what they wanted, or redefined what they wanted. They wanted a GPA of a 2.5, not just the senior year, but over the junior and senior year. They wanted, again, CCP credit, the AP, that didn't change there. But what changed was the last two, the capstone and the work requirement, the state actually provided us guidance. And there was a document that our counselors, our Unit 12 team, our current Unit 12 team, they've been working with students throughout the summer, leading into the school year as there's additional requirements for these kids. And I can tell you, our team, our Unit 12 team right now, Mrs. Crystal Wolf, Miranda Rose, and Caroline Serson, they're just doing a fantastic job with our senior class. Moving on to 2021 and 2022, that's our juniors and sophomore classes. Again, they have the initial three pathways from 2018 on, and their extended options, actually, they are going to default to the class of 2023 and beyond for their options. So if you're a little bit confused, that's okay, you're not in the minority. A lot of people are a little bit confused with this. So let me go through and present what the class of 2023 and beyond is. So there's three areas that we're going to focus on, three areas that are, we're going to focus on because they're a requirement. The first is basic, and this is the Ohio Department of Education terminology. So the first one is basic, secondary is, second is competency, and third is readiness. For the basic, this hasn't changed. This is still just the high school credits. Our students set, the state requires 20, however, in Mentor Schools, we require 21. So our students need 21 high school credits to graduate. Second area of focus is competency. There's two kind of ways to do this. The first way is through an end-of-course test, which we use the AIR test for. Students now have to just focus on Algebra I and English II, which is really our, our sophomore-level students. And they have to earn a, a score. It actually got lowered from the previous score. It's now 684, and I can tell you a little bit about what that data looks like right now for us at the tail end of this presentation. And then they gave three other ways to graduate, or to meet the competency requirements. And they are. The first one is demonstrating career-focused activities. And they divided this in two different areas. One is foundation skills, and another one is supporting skills. Students have to do at least one in a foundation skill. They can do two, but at least one. And those foundation skills are a proficient score on web exam, so those would be our students in career tech and take advantage of that option, a 12-point industry-recognized credential, and that's just not for students in career tech. It could be any student that could be doing that. And that's why it's so important that we run these industry, these senior-only credentialing programs, and I know Dr. Glavine's going to present on here in a little bit. And the third option would be a pre-apprenticeship or acceptance into an approved apprenticeship program. The second, the supporting skills component of this would be work-based learning, earning the required score on work keys, and then finally earning the Ohio Means Job Readiness Seal. And some of this, we're still actually waiting for the state to, to define exactly what they want. Other ways to show competency is enlisting in the military. And the final one would be through CCP coursework. This is earning credit in a college-level math and/or college-level English class. So the math then would obviously meet the Algebra I requirement, English would then meet the English II requirement. The third area of focus for our class of 2023 and beyond, or our current juniors or seniors who cannot graduate from their initial pathway, is readiness. So if you heard the word seals, this is where seals come into play. So students have to earn two diploma seals, one of which has to be Ohio-designed seals. So there are 12 to choose from, nine are Ohio-defined, three we get to approve locally. And I'm going to go through what I, that we're recommending for Mentor High School is our locally-defined seals here very soon. But our seals for graduation, Ohio Means Jobs Readiness Seal, industry-recognized credential seal, college, college-ready seal, military enlistment seal, citizenship seal. The citizenship seal, that's just the U.S., U.S. history and American government AIR tests that we're currently giving. So a combination of passing scores on that will allow students to earn this citizenship seal. The science seal, that's just the biology AIR test that we're already giving to students. An honors diploma seal, and I can tell you, if our students are earning an honors diploma, they have no problem earning, earning the other seals or having any problem graduating. The seal of illiteracy and a technology seal. And some of these, we do have more information on, others, we're still waiting for the state to, to finalize what, what they want. And the three locally-designed seals are community service seal, fine and performing arts seal, and student engagement seal. So before I present on those, I just, so Ohio law requires a local board education to, to adopt these. And then this wasn't, this wasn't just an administration decision. We actually had a, multiple committees with our, with high school teachers and counselors to come up with these different plans. I spoke to different administrators throughout the state. Ours, our requirements are not the easiest in the state. You know, I know some other districts have a little bit easier requirements, but ours are also not the hardest requirements. You know, somewhere in the middle that we feel very strongly our students are able to reach, but they're not unreal, unrealistic at the same time. So what we are recommending for our engagement seal. So our students are going to participate in extracurricular activities such as athletics, clubs, or student government in a meaningful extent. This is either four, four seasons of involvement throughout their high school career, or in the case that we have a student that transfers in as a senior, we recommend that they have to participate in two seasons. I'd hate to see a, you know, a child transferring their senior year from a different, from a different state that doesn't have this component, and I, I don't want to penalize that student for that. Our next readiness seal, locally-defined seal that we can define ourselves, is the fine arts seal. And what we are recommending is a combination of all three requirements. A minimum of three courses in the arts for Mentor High School or through CCP, and a portfolio, including sample work of authentic experiences. And we will then have a committee that, that will oversee that to determine whether or not the students meet our basic requirements. And that committee will consist of an administrator, a counselor, and depending on who the, the student is, a member of our art department or our performing arts department. And finally, the community service seal. This is a minimum of 50 hours that we want to see, and then we also have questions and information students have to provide us. We use the guiding document that the state has used for the class of 2020 to help build this one. So we're asking for a description of the specific project, benefit to the community, a time log, and the skills demonstrated and learned. So a little bit of writing component to this as well, and as students have an opportunity to give back to the community. Before I turn it over for questions, just a little bit of information. So with the state redefining what competency is, what a passing score is for Algebra I and for English II, our English 10 AIR test, for the class of 2020 and 2021, our current seniors and juniors, under the old testing system requirements, 77.9% of our students pass on the first time. Under the new test requirements, 90.2% of our students would have passed initially. For English II, previously, 84.4. Under the new requirements, it jumps up to 92.8. And with looking at our current sophomores, they have not taken the English II test. They're going to be taking that in, in April here very soon, or I'm sorry, in March here when we return from spring break. But if we look at their Algebra I test scores, 77.6% of our students pass Algebra I initially. If we use the new score, we would be at 89.45. So our students are, are performing very well. We're looking at about 10% of our students, and this is even before we have a chance to remediate, you know, do some interventions and have our students retake the assessment. But our students are doing very well. We have a lot of different things put in place already to address if we do have students that might need it to graduate through one of our alternative pathways. And we are continuing to explore those options to make sure our students can graduate, but also just make sure that they're, are ready for success when they leave Mentor High School. Now, turn, turn over some questions.
I love those seals. I think it, it gives every student an opportunity to define their own personal success, and that a student may have strengths in non-traditional areas, and instead of that being ignored, it gives that, that student a chance to really shine. I, I'm delighted with that. Oh, I did have one question. So students who are in the dramatic arts, so they participate in the drama club productions, that's not a class. Does that figure into that community or the engagement seal or the fine arts?
It could be both. You know, it can be part of the engagement seal, but it can also be part, they're taking our, let's say, our, some of our art classes, and they could be in some music classes as well, and then they're doing this as part of their portfolio experience, and they would qualify for both. And, you know, one thing I did not mention, but students that say that they're enlisting in the military, they would meet that requirement, and they can also earn the seal. So students can meet the requirements in different areas, competency and readiness.
Has it been frustrating that the state hasn't nailed down the details for this year's graduates?
The earlier the, well, this year's graduates, you know, we got that information last year. And the earlier we get the information, the better. But like I said, we have a great team here at Mentor High School. Our students do an excellent job and are ready on the state test. So we, you know, they could give it to us probably in mid-May, and we would make sure, we'd find a way to make sure our kids could graduate. So, but it's great to have it early.
Thank you very much. That's exciting stuff.
Mr. Crowe, who has to keep track of all these?
That is a great question. That is a great question, actually. So Annie Herram, she's our department coordinator at the high school for guidance. Annie, myself, and Jan Orlando have been meeting to go over what Infinite Campus, the capabilities of Infinite Campus, that way that can track that for us. It's going to, component is going to fall on our counselors, our counselors and our unit principals to track, but we are, we're set up for a lot of success with Infinite Campus as we continue to explore all the, the functions that that can provide us, you know. Just for example, families are going to be able to log in, and they're going to be able to see what pathway their child can graduate with, you know, there are a couple different options. We're not ready to launch that yet, but we're going to have that there. So there'll be some, I guess, tracking that we have to do, you know, human, that we're going to have to do kind of manually, but a lot of it, we're going to be able to plug it into our data management system.
As, as part of the process, is there a, a time or a procedure for notifying parents that their student may or may not be on the pathway to graduation?
Yes, and we're going to, that's going to be something else that we're going to bring to the board here for board adoption. We, we have to define how we're going to identify our students that are at risk for not graduating for the class of 2023. So that'll be, I'll be presenting another board meeting here very soon to do that. But I'm, I would just expect it's going to be a combination of how they scored on their initial AIR test, the Algebra I test, and a combination of, it could be attendance rates and how they're performing in their core classes, meaning if they're failing. You know, some sort of combination of that. You know, we'll look at whatever, we're going to use the research-based, you know, statistics that are out there for us as well to help us define what we want.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Crowe. Before we go on to the next one, Mr. Crowe's presentation that was included in your board packets and also in, in the update this past Friday, I would like to officially recommend the plan for approval.
So moved.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. President and members of the board, finally, I would like to invite Dr. Glavine to the podium for CTE curriculum update.
Lower that down a little bit. Thank you. Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Porter and Mr. Wilson, I know this is going to surprise you guys, but I am extremely excited to be here tonight to provide a curriculum update regarding our career technical education programs in the Mentor School District. Now, while I'll be reviewing the curriculum updates, I first wanted to provide some background on our career tech programs and our Lake Shore Compact. Okay. So what is the Lake Shore Compact? The Lake Shore Compact is our career technical consortium that serves Euclid, Wickliffe, and Mentor school systems. Students are able to participate in their junior and senior year of high school, and they also have the option for a two-year program, or we also have the one-year senior-only programs that we're going to discuss tonight that we continue to expand. Now, with our new additions tonight, we will be offering next school year over 22 different programs for students in our compact. That is an extremely large increase in a very short period of time, so we're, I'm very excited about that. To also just give you some context in terms of size of the number of students that are in compact programs, for the 2019-2020 school year, we have over 600 students that are in a CTE program. Now, one of the things that we're tasked with, with our career tech programs is how do we go best about meeting the needs of both students and the community? And one of the things that we do really well at Mentor Schools in terms of is partnering with community members. And these are ways that we can also help, and you're going to hear tonight, how those partnerships help us with the opportunities we provide to our students. And what we look to focus on is we look at, obviously focusing on the creation of new programs to meet needs in the community and demand of students. We also look to invest in our existing programs, which I'm going to talk about to help meet the need. And then lastly, we look to strengthen our business partnerships. And all three of those, you're going to keep hearing over and over as I talk through my presentation tonight. Now, one of the things that I just want to touch base on, because I think it's important to understand before I get into our new programs, is how this ties in to Mr. Crowe's presentation. to understand before I get into our new programs, is how this ties in to Mr. Crowe's presentation that he just gave. So one of the things that we're focused on is we know that we have the graduation opportunities. If you guys don't mind if I just step over here real quick because I have this, so it's kind of helpful that we have these graduation pathways that ODE has. And one of the first things that's very top that has those 20 credits, or for Menter Schools, 21 credits to graduate. And in addition to that, you have to show competency through three options that Mr. Crowe talked about. So option three is completing college credit plus courses, which is going to be a certain percentage of students. And then option in the middle is enlisting the military, which the average across the country is 1% of students go into the military. Now, Menter Schools exceeds that. We doubled it. We have over 2% that go into the military, but still, it's a smaller percentage. And then the biggest option, which they apparently made on purpose, larger, is option one, which is going to be that career readiness. And with all the programs that we discussed tonight, all of those fall into that option as being a graduation pathway for all of our students. And I think that that's important to note that. Now, the first program, so, pretty excited about this, obviously. Following an article, following an article in the News Herald last summer detailing the need for public safety professionals in northeast Ohio, Mr. Porter and myself reached out to Chief Searls to look to see if Menter Schools could be a part of the solution. Working together with Menter Fire and Auburn Career Center, we have been able to finalize a partnership for the new Menter Fire EMT Academy Program. The Menter Fire EMT Academy is a one-year, senior-only course with the focus on obtaining an industry-recognized credential. This unique program partnered with the Menter Fire Department combines classroom and laboratory activities to prepare students to perform entry-level emergency medical care as an EMT. Students will assess patients' conditions, administering appropriate emergency medical care, and perform EMT duties safely and effectively. Best of all, the program will be housed right across the street at Station Number Five with the Menter Fire Department. At the end of this course, successful students will be eligible to sit for the Ohio certification testing as an emergency medical technician. In addition, through our partnership with Auburn Career Center, students completing this program will have priority registration in the Auburn Career Center Fire One and Fire Two program, eight-week program that takes place in June and July immediately following completion of our program. I should also note that since word of our program started to spread, we received letters of recommendation from the fire chiefs of Kirtland, Wickliffe, Willowick, Willoughby, Menter on the Lake, and the Lake County Commissioners, all excited and just letting us know that they fully support and want to partner with us in this new program. Now, our next program. Faced with the impending closure of the Euclid Automotive Program and acknowledging the need and benefit for our students in the community, Mr. Porter, Mr. Wilson, and myself engaged in conversations with Jim Brown from Classic Automotive Group earlier this year about a possible partnership. Following several months of conversations, we were successfully able to enter into an agreement with Classic Automotive Group, and we will be offering next fall a two-year program right on the Classic Auto Campus. Students in this two-year program will be trained in engine repair and performance, automatic transmission and transaxles, manual transmissions, drivetrains, brakes, electrical systems, heating and air conditioning. In addition, due to our partnership with Classic Automotive, in the second year of the program, students will have the ability for an extensive work-based learning experience on the Classic Campus. Now, the following programs that I'm going to talk about are an excellent example of how our compact collaborates effectively to meet the needs of all stakeholders. Acknowledging the demand for healthcare professionals in northeast Ohio, Euclid High School has taken the initiative to create the next three programs. Now, when I talk about demand for healthcare professionals in northeast Ohio, that we are aware of, but one of the other things, I'd like to provide some context of student demand. With our most recent 10th grade class, we had over 10% of the sophomore class apply for our Allied Health Program. And when I say 10% of the sophomore class, 10% of the Menter, Euclid, and Wickliffe sophomore class applied for the Allied Health Program. Now, these programs that I'm about to discuss will help address that demand, and we are very appreciative for the excellent partner Euclid Schools has been in our compact. I also like to add that in addition, I should note that we are also working to address the demand in Menter Schools. Next year, our Allied Health Program is going to be relocating in the Menter Campus to a different location that will result in an additional 25% seat capacity, and this is all being accomplished at no additional cost in personnel. So there's a couple of different ways that we're looking to address this. First one is going to be the Exercise Science and Sports Medicine Program that's going to be offered at Euclid. Students in this program will have the ability to apply procedures and techniques used in athletic training and the care of rehabilitation of athletic injuries and therapeutic exercise. Students in this program will have the ability to earn the industry-recognized credential of physical therapy aid, which is one of the most in-demand credentials in the state of Ohio right now, and this will be located at the brand-new Euclid High School in their new fieldhouse that is opening this fall. The next program is digital medical records. Digital Medical Records is a one-year, senior-only course with the focus on obtaining an industry-recognized credential. Students learn the skills needed to work in a medical office for a private practice, hospital, or clinic, and to deliver quality patient care. Medical office work will concentrate on registering patients, scheduling appointments, verifying insurance benefits, transfers, discharge, and patient billing. At the end of this course, students will be eligible to sit for certification testing as an electronic health record specialist. Patient care. Now, when I talked about our Allied Health Program, one of the goals of that program is that students have the opportunity to earn their STNA, which is a State Tested Nurse Assistant License. It's one of the most, again, in-demand credentials. So when we look to design our programs, it's a combination of looking at student demand, but then also demand in industry and a need for employees, because if we can get both of those, that's where we're going to have the most success. Recognizing that, we will also have a program at Euclid next year of patient care, which will be another one-year, senior-only course with the focus on obtaining an industry-recognized credential. The program is designed to provide students with basic healthcare skills necessary for an entry-level position in the medical field. Students will learn to assist patients with daily living and fundamental tasks, perform accurate vital signs, assist in a variety of medical treatments, and perform tasks down in proper personal protective equipment. Okay. At the end of this course, students will be eligible to sit for the STNA license. Now, lastly, this is not necessarily a new program, but a program that we are altering in a way to help more students. So due to our continued professional development at Menter Schools provided by our curriculum department, and our desire to continue to individualize and differentiate instruction for students, we will be offering our existing marketing and business administration program next year for both honors and traditional credit. Without any additional cost for the district, we will be able to differentiate instruction in the classroom, allowing for increased rigor and helping better meet the needs of all students. In addition to increased classroom requirements, students receiving honors credit will have the ability to earn several industry-recognized credentials, including entrepreneurship and small business credential, and customer service and sales training credentials through the National Retail Federation Foundation. And those are the programs, and at this point, I will gladly take any questions.
We had the Allied Health that was related to the Lake Wellness Campus. Is that in addition to the ones that you've shared, or how does that evolved?
Yes, so our Allied Health Program that was with Lake Health, we have that located on the Menter Campus right now, and that's the program that we are expanding capacity by 25% by relocating it to another location on Menter High School's campus.
Any revelation as to where that is, or it's still up?
No, so where we, we are actually going to be moving it where our graphic design program is. So our graphic design program is in the fine arts wing. It's where there used to be a studio, like a video studio. So what we're doing is, in terms of preparing ourselves now, but then also allowing the ability for expansion, we are moving it in there because it's two classrooms combined, and we're investing funds to actually provide a classroom environment and then a skills training lab right next door to it. And what this allows for us to do is not only meet the demand by immediately increasing capacity by 25%, but we have enough room in there that if we ever should desire to add an additional instructor or look to increase capacity, we would now have the resources to do so. Yeah. That's all.
I received a phone call last night regarding my son who graduated last year from our CTE programs, and I was a little bit thrilled with that because I'm thinking, and please give me a little bit more, about are we following our students to see their success after graduation in our programs?
We do. So one of the things that we do with, in Menter Schools is that following high school graduation from a career technical education program, we follow up around March the following year to just better understand what are they currently doing? Are they currently working in the occupation that they maybe focus their studies on? Are they in college? Have they earned any additional credentials? It's a way for us to assess how we're doing and then areas that we can improve upon or focus more on that are more successful.
Well, I was thrilled. I mean, just the fact that having been in the construction management program and all the involvement he had at Lakeland and the houses, he's changed his major to civil engineering, but that gave him a taste in also the senior project and working with a civil engineer in the area. So it was just a wonderful experience and to know that we're following up and seeing how we did, basically.
Yeah, and it's really exciting, and that's kind of how a lot of our programs where we follow up with them, that's how we kind of get some of our stats where, one of the things that I'll talk about a lot is some of the, you know, misperceptions regarding career tech is that maybe not all students are going to be going to college a two-year or four-year, but in reality, graduates of the Lake Shore Compact Menter Schools career technical programs, over 74% of our students go on to a two-year or four-year university. And we're able to obtain those stats by following up with them the following year.
Absolutely. Great.
Yeah. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
We appreciate your enthusiasm for the program.
Nice to hear. We're excited that you're excited.
Dr. Glavine, thank you. Dr. Glavine's career tech curriculum was included in your board packets in the Friday update. I would like to officially recommend the curriculum for your approval.
So moved.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Jezling?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the board, I am recommending approval of Agenda Item C1 related to Certified Personnel and C2 through C4, all related human resource matters.
So moved.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Jezling?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Thank you. Before I conclude my report tonight, I want to talk briefly about coronavirus. I think everyone's mind is on the ever-changing coronavirus situation. As you know, in the district, we have remained vigilant and proactive as we've taken many steps to protect our students and our staff members, and we've communicated out to our stakeholders all the essential information to keep everyone up to date. As we head towards spring break, we recognize that K-12 schools have a high likelihood of being affected by closures due to coronavirus. We will certainly use the Lake County General Health District and the state of Ohio as resources and guides during this unprecedented time. Actually, county superintendents will be meeting with the Lake County Health District this coming Thursday to gain more information. Knowing of this possibility, tomorrow afternoon, we will send out to parents and staff further information to help us achieve a state of readiness in case our schools need to be closed for an extended period of time. As we have done in some recent past years with calamity days, students will be able to work on their classes remotely using the many technology resources we have available. The staff will also be prepared to deliver online lessons and assignments to keep the learning going. And while this is not as ideal a circumstance as being here in school, I am confident that by working together, we can adapt any challenges that this presents. Among other things, we will remind our 6th through 12th graders to take their devices home on Thursday, which is their last day before break, and we'll make sure that we can get as many of our younger students on devices at home, either theirs or ours, as possible. I will obviously provide more depth of information in the communications tomorrow, but I felt it was important to at least share a little bit of this on the topic tonight.
Thank you so much, Mr. Porter. The video that went out last week, I thought, was timely and well-produced so that students could understand and would alleviate some of the concerns that parents had about how our buildings are cleaned, disinfected, in order to, you know, make them as safe an environment for everybody, both staff and students, as possible. And the fact that we have essentially one-on-one devices in our district for children, that opens up opportunities that would have been unprecedented in, you know, even 10 years ago.
Thank you. It was perfect timing, what you did, because just that evening before, I received the calls, and what are you doing about the coronavirus?
We want to try to stay on top of this and be as, you know, transparent and immediate with our communication as possible, but as you know, it's an ever-changing challenge.
I appreciated the proactive response.
Thank you. Thank you. There are no other questions or comments on that. That concludes my portion of tonight's agenda.
Okay, next on the agenda, Board of Education reports and recommendations. Letter A, Business.
Yes. On an ongoing basis, the Transportation Department assesses the quality of our bus fleet and determines when a bus has reached a point of repairs or more costly than replacement. We anticipate this every year and budget for replacement vehicles. The cumulative value of the five buses we've identified that are no longer practical to maintain exceeds $10,000. Therefore, we're requesting the board authorize a public auction and allow us to dispose of those, the proceeds of which will be used to help fund bus replacement purchases.
Do you need a motion? So moved.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Jezling?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Legislative report is next on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President. Excuse me. So the Ed Choice Voucher debate continues in the House and Senate. The House on February 5th took action on the Ed Choice voucher issue by amending and voting out Senate Bill 89 by a vote of 88 to 7. It phases out performance-based vouchers and increased income-based voucher eligibility from 200% to 250% of the federal poverty level. In addition, SB 89 dissolves the three academic distress commissions, ADCs, and sunsets the school district territory transfer law on September 1. The Senate did not agree with the amended bill, and in response, scheduled nine conference committee hearings on House Bill 9 focused exclusively on the voucher issue. The hearings began on February 11th, and board members, superintendents, treasurers from across the state testified before the conference committee. As the House and Senate move into recess, House Speaker Larry Householder recently told reporters, "You can only reach the olive branch out so far without a partner. I can't do anything about it." The House will be in recess starting February 27th, and they did that, and the Senate will be in recess starting March 5th to campaign for the March 17th primary election. Politics always comes ahead of... Both chambers are scheduled to resume session the week of March 23. Governor Mike DeWine told reporters, "It's clear that this is to be settled. It's also clear the House and Senate are far apart, so we are starting to weigh in, and we're going to try to collectively come up with a bill. We have to do that," he said. He further commented that "we have an obligation to make sure every child has the opportunity to live up to their God-given potential, and they can't do that if they're in a school that's not functioning very well, or if they're not getting a good education." I want to pause right there just to see... I want to pause right there to see, absorb that thought. So we've got to preserve our public schools, but we also have to have at the same time give family choices when they're poor and their kids are going to a school that's not performing very well. We don't experience that here, do we? I don't believe so. Householder and Alboff met with DeWine the week of February 24th. Legislative action must be concluded prior to the start of April 1st, application window. So, that is closing the window. Are they going to make it? Interesting to note, I didn't watch this, I only heard of it, President Trump gave his State of the Union address. President Trump stated, State of the Union address on February 4th had considerable focus on the choice issues and privatization of public education through his call for passage of the Education Freedom Scholarship and Opportunity Act. That's a long title. The proposed legislation is a $5 billion federal tax credit program to fund scholarships for 1 million students. Do the math, that's $5,000 per student. So if you have two kids, maybe you can contribute 10 grand. But anyway, I continue. For 1 million students to attend a school of their choice by giving an individual a tax credit for donating to a scholarship program, this reduces federal revenues resulting in $5 billion less to fund public education and other important programs. Senator Matt Huffman introduced House-Senate Bill 199 to formally start, I'm sorry, formally state the General Assembly's intention to create a process for certifying those eligible I wanted to read the note on House Bill 493, introduced by Scott Wigum, "to permit a child whose parents live in a different school district to continue to attend school in the school district in which the child attended school at the beginning of the school year, even if the child moves to a different school district." Editorial comment, it sounds like open enrollment, I mean, being forced upon school districts? Because it just means they have to leave. They just move and the kid stays behind, and cross your fingers on that one. And one last thing, and this is relating to athletics. House Bill 527, introduced by Reps. Jenna Powell and Reggie Stolffus, I think I pronounced it correctly, "to enact the Safe Women's Sports Act, to require schools and public and private colleges to designate separate single-sex teams and sports for each sex." That's it, I'm not going to read the rest of it. Any comments? Any, Dan, Bill, any feedback on the Ed Choice? What do you think?
My judgment is that we'll see another extension of the deadline, that there's still considerable conflict between Speaker of the House and President of the Senate, and it doesn't appear, even with the governor weighing in, that they're ready to move forward. So I hope I'm wrong, but I sense that's where we're headed.
Well, if they come back together on the 23rd, that leaves them, what, five business days and...
Six, maybe.
The House Bill 493, I'm assuming that refers to if a child's custodial arrangement has changed, that, not that both parents are ineligible to have their child attend that district, but if the parents are living in two different places, and let's say, Menter and Willoughby, the child started in Menter and the custodial parent lives in Willoughby, they could continue in Menter rather than, if they vacate completely? Because how would that be pertinent for a child whether or not they had parents living in different districts? Because that...
Well, that's a good question. Just that, that detail's not there. My assumption was that...
They can both move.
The custodial parents or lived in the school district in which the child was enrolled, like for instance, in Menter both, and the parents at some point during the school year will have moved to Payne's Zone, and they want their child to stay behind in Menter. This will allow that child to stay behind in Menter. Is that your take, Dan?
That's what I understand. Also, we're now, the custodial parent's district of residency is where a child attends. This is saying, once the school year starts, even if the custodial parent moves out of the district, the child can continue to be enrolled in a non-resident district.
I would think that somebody could sue to say, if both parents, you know, if it's an intact household and they want to move, that the child could complete their school year regardless of the parent's residency. I don't know how you could say it was fair for us, you know, divorced parents to have that opportunity when an intact home doesn't.
I think this is one incremental step towards the eventual elimination of geographic boundaries.
Mm-hmm. Slowly I turn, step by step.
I don't want to be right, but...
Interesting. Okay.
Thank you. That's it.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Tuttle. Chief Financial Officers Report and Recommendation.
Yes, I recommend the Board of Education approve Agenda Items 7A through 7F, and I would note that the inter-fund transfers and supplemental appropriations include the supplemental funding of the five-year capital plan by transferring monies out of general fund into the permanent improvement fund, as the board previously determined. The supplemental funding this year will be $1,090,603.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Recommended the Board of Education certified at tax rates for tax year 2020, which will be collected in 2021, is presented in Exhibit 7-G.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
And Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Ms. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
That completes my agenda items for this evening.
Next on the agenda is any unfinished business. New business. I would like to request the board that we set a date for a work session to review financial implications of the current funding structures. We're hearing a lot of changes from the state as well as local, and I think we need to spend some time working on this. So if you'd like to do that, we need to pick a date.
Do you have a date in mind?
Do you want an evening or a Saturday, or what were you thinking?
It's probably easiest for people who are working to do a Saturday.
Thanks.
The spring break is, ends on the 22nd. So I wish you'd make it perhaps after that.
Do you want to do it on the 28th?
Depending on the time, I'm, I have a commitment at 11:30, but I could do the morning. I don't know how much time you were thinking would be involved in doing a good job with this.
Couple hours.
Think two hours would do it?
Yeah, I think so.
Nine to 11?
Nine to 11 would that work for everybody?
Yeah.
Okay.
On the 28th, does that work in everybody's schedule?
I'm up in the air right now on the 28th. But if the majority of everyone is good with that, go ahead for right now, and I'll have to give you a...
Okay.
Do you want to...
Or do you want to suggest another date, Dan?
Um, well, the 4th, I'm good.
I could do the 4th.
I'm fine on the 4th. April 4th.
I can do the 4th, too.
4 is okay for me.
Do you like that better? Does that work better for you, Dan?
Yes, it does, thanks.
Okay. Let me switch it to the 4th.
And we said 9 to 11?
9, 9 to 11?
Now we can make it human time 9:30. No, I'm just kidding. I'll be up and ready to go at night.
The daylight, the sun will be up. It'll help you.
That's right, that's right, I'll be good.
Thank you. Time for hearing of the public of any issue they'd like to bring to, for the board.
On the 4th.
Hearing none. Next, we will be moving to executive session. First part of the executive session, we'll be doing expulsion appeal hearing. Purpose of this part of this meeting is to hear the appeal of the decision regarding the recommended expulsion of a student attending Menter Exempt Village School District. For the record, present are the student and the student's parents. Student's mother has requested that this appeal be heard in executive session, which is closed to the public. The student's mother, on behalf of the student, has requested an appeal in executive session. Do I have a motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Sections 3313.66 and Sections 121.22G1 to consider the discipline or the investigation of charges against a public school student?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Wilson, please call the roll.
Ms. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Ms. Butler, the board will now move to executive session. When the board is ready to proceed with the hearing, I will ask the student and any other individuals who are here on behalf of the student and members of the administration to join us. We will be coming back from executive session to vote on the results of the expulsion We are now back in public session. The board has voted to affirm the decision to impose a 50-six-day expulsion, but to hold in abeyance if the student meets the following requirements. One, the student will be allowed to complete his coursework during this expulsion for credit through the Cardinal Achievement Academy online program. Two, the student must participate in regular ongoing counseling and provide a monthly documentation of attendance to the district. Three, a threat assessment will be conducted in March 2020 by Mr. Dudziak. Based on the evidence presented, sufficient information has been provided to impose an expulsion for the disruption of school, including evidence of student statements. Please be aware that pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 2506, you have the right to appeal this decision to a court of common pleas for Lake County. If you choose to appeal, a notice of appeal must be filed with the board and the court within 30 days in accordance with the Revised Code Section 3313.66, Section E. This concludes the appeal hearing. Do I have a motion to adjourn this section of the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Ms. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Do we need a motion to adopt the board's decision? Yes. So we now need a motion to adopt the board's determination.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is negotiations update. If we do that, we need to go back into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Ms. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
...for this evening.